Rose, you ready?
Yes.
So it is 6:04 and we will start the meeting of Angels Camp City Council, June 21st of 2012. Rose, roll call please.
Mayor Borleo is absent. Vice Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Councilmember Tuscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato is absent. Staff is present.
We'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so reporting out of closed session, a direction was given to staff on both items A and B. Moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. We do have some...
Yeah, so...
Amendments.
Yeah, my recommendation, just because we knew that councilmember Scherrato was going to be out, we didn't anticipate Mayor Borleo to be out, so my recommendation is to actually pull 7C, D, E, F, and J, and move those to the license.
When we have a full council on that day?
When we have a full council.
Okay.
Repeat that just so. 7C, D, E, F, and J, moving those to the license.
Okay, we make a motion now on that?
Yeah.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Isabel?
I will second it.
Gretel. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's a 3-0-2 vote on that. That takes us to item number five, which is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person, and we have a handy dandy little clock here now that you guys can probably see. Do we have any public comments? How about online, Rose? Do we have anybody joining us tonight? Okay. Second public comment. That takes us to item six, which is our consent agenda. Consent, item A is our... well, actually, all items, A through F. Are we in agreement with all of those items? Everyone good with A through F on the council?
Yes.
Okay, how about members of the public? Does anybody have any discussion or reason to pull our consent items, A through F? Okay, having said that, looking for a motion on consent. What motion?
I'll second, to give you a break, girl.
Oh, thank you.
Getting tired over here.
All in favor?
Aye.
That'll pass on a 3-0-2. Taking to regular agenda, item number A. Discussion and direction for the annual fee adjustment for police, fire, parks, and traffic impact mitigation fees. Amy, obviously.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we always adjust this on July 1st in accordance with the California Construction Cost Index, because these particular fees relate to building things like capital improvements for fire police, blah, blah, blah. There was an historically high percentage this year, 13.4 percent. It's never been that high in the history of the California Construction Cost Index. So staff was going to bring that to your attention and make two recommendations. Either look at the five-year average and adjust these fees based on the five-year average of 4.9 percent increase, or you could stick with the 13.4 increase, or you could do a combination. You could do fire, parks, police on the 13.4, and traffic perhaps at 4.9. And the reason I draw a distinction is if you look at the table on page three of your staff report, you can see that the largest increases, of course, occur with traffic impact mitigation fees, and specifically for single-family residences. If you look with 13.4, that would be a $1,300 increase per single-family residence. Whereas if you look at the fire impact fee, you know, it is less than $100 increase, even at 13.4 percent. So looking at these, the one most likely to make a big impact is the traffic impact mitigation fee. And so if you were looking at maybe not, using 13.4 for everything, perhaps use 4.9 for traffic, 13.4 for everything else, or just go with everything, 4.9 percent increase. Did I totally confuse you by adding that? And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I think when Amy and I were looking at this, my whole mouth, it's unquote. This is the only time we've ever seen that so high. It's highly unlikely it's going to be that high going forward. And we don't want to...
Suppressing...
Suppress, yeah. Suppress growth from building, so obviously, you know, the staff because of the handling we've been holding out there because that's how it goes, but not to be at 13.4.
The highest previously was 8-point something.
And then it fluctuates every year.
And it fluctuates every year, yeah. But no one's ever seen 13.4 before.
Has it ever gone down?
Oh, yeah. Sure, it was like 2.6 when the last few times you've done.
So we're going to readdress this July 1st?
Every July 1st, it automatically inflates. And the only reason we brought it to council is because this year, our automatic is 13.4. That's what we would normally do, but we're bringing it to you this time because we look at that.
Yeah, so really, normally, we wouldn't remember it at all, because it's all embedded in the ordinance, amendments, and resolutions. And we would just look at that CCI, and we would just inflate it according to that, because this was so high, neither one of us felt comfortable doing that. So we wanted to give you the opportunity to not do that. And to have it be lower if you want, but if you want to stick with the 13.4 percent, that's fully within the confines of the operating.
I actually think that everything is so astronomically overpriced that I'm almost peering towards just keeping everything at 4.9, because everything is just out of control. Unless you just don't want growth, and you just write 13, and nobody's getting in, and it's all going down. So what should we say? If there's any public comment on this? Does anybody, members of the public, want to comment on our B candy? Nobody on mine?
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. I have to agree with Gretel. My mind was going that same way. I was thinking maybe it's 4.9 across the board. 13.4 is insane, yeah.
And it's just for a year?
It's just one year. We can adjust it. It was 2.8 last year?
Yeah, I mean, I think the builders and the people are already getting hit so hard with their material costs.
So Amy, you're recommending either we go with 4.9, 13.4, or kind of a half and half?
We're recommending you go with 4.9. And if you want it to be selective, at least the 4.9 on the traffic fees.
I'll make the motion to go with 4.9 across the board. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
3-0-2 on that as well. They agree? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Takes us to item B. Discussion, City of Angels Financial Statements, fiscal year end June 30th, and Management Response to June 30th Management Letter for back to council.
So this is like the most boring document we've ever operated. But, you know, it's a requirement that all agencies have to do financial statements every year. Normally, this would be completed 180 days from the end of the fiscal year, by December 31st. When I came on in February, I realized that I had not done. So I immediately started communicating with the external auditor to come in what is hanging up. And this was part of my resignation conference, all of the accounting back in-house. Was that a big part of the issue? But in addition to that, once we kind of got through that, we were being taught about this part there, I also had identified that the CICAD or the other closely funded benefit actuary had not been done. And in order to do the ER financial statement, you have to have that report as well. So I was able to find someone to do that.
The most big funding.
So that was the last piece, and we got that done. And then we were able to finally get the financial statements. So the report came to us on page six. We reviewed it, made sure all the numbers jived. I was able to go through the management report. And then we were able to... and then I needed to go through the management report to try to determine what changes do we need to make as a city to make sure that we're not having issues that were identified in that management report. So there were material findings in the management letter. I wasn't surprised by any of them. I had talked to the auditor prior, so he knew, but I knew what he was going to say. And I don't have any doubts that going forward, the city is not going to have any similar findings to that. We might have other findings, but we won't have those. And I don't always look at findings for the bad thing. Sometimes it's a wager on to have a different, you know, setup. I look something, just give us suggestions on how you can shore up internal facilities that help with our maintenance, and as soon as possible. So in terms of this lovely, you know, on-page document, we did not have to do a single audit, which would be another report. So if we received $750,000 in federal funding in a given year, we would have to do a single audit. We didn't reach that threshold for the January of '21 fiscal year. We will reach that for this fiscal year, and most definitely for next fiscal year. So we will do a single audit for the next year. So things that are important when you kind of look through this is that how they look at our financials is their governmental activities and their business-type activities. So business-type would be water and wastewater, and governmental would be everything else. So governmental activities, the net position increased by $2.9 million as compared to June 30th, '20. And that's good, that's a good direction to go in. So two things happened to contribute to that. One was cash investment, or 1.79 million higher than they were in '20. And our construction in progress is higher by 2.2 million. So assets for cash investment and assets related to construction both increased. We've been having products. Business-type activities, similar, not as high, but they increased by $437,000. And that's probably going to be pretty similar for June 30th, 2022. And mainly, that's because we're going to have a heavy investment in business-type assets, so like more construction in progress, projects that have been happening this fiscal year. So that's what you're going to see, those assets increase as well. Capital and operating grants were 1.2 million higher than in '60, '20, but because those were state grants, not federal grants, that's why we didn't have to do a single audit. Unassigned fund balances, where the general fund closed at $4 million. So if you recall in our budget hearings, I had said we have about $4 million in the general fund in fund balance. That's pretty much what that's based on. And we're trending in that direction, probably a little bit higher when it kind of close. And that's mainly because, if you recall in the preliminary budget documents, we've had that increase in TOT and sales tax, but not that overall increase in our budget. So that's just been accumulating here over the year. And it's unsigned, because it's not pre-ordered for anything. It's sitting there in the general fund itself, and it's not earmarked for reserve or any order of construction, so that's why we consider it undefined. General fund revenues were a little over $1 million higher than June 30th of 2020. And again, almost entirely due to increase in taxes. General fund expenses were only $380,000 higher than June 30th, 2020. So that goes in line with, hey, our taxes went up by $1 million, but we only spent $380,000 for. And then, as this was one of the pieces the auditor actually pointed out, is that there were four general fund departments that over-expended across their budgets by $231,000. And that basically means council approved department XYZ to spend, you know, $1 million, and they ended up spending $1,030,000. That $30,000 was never addressed to come back to council in order to give that appropriation authority. So that's something that Michelle and I work on quite a bit, to make sure that all of those appropriation authorities are constantly reviewed. And as we need to make changes, we will come back to council to get that authority. So overall, very healthy financial picture for the city. We did a lot of changes in accounting, budget management, project management, and then the addition of our finance director. That's all that helped us in terms of making sure that we're shoring up things like, you know, the last bullet where the departments over-expended or any of the material findings in the management report. So in the management letter, the findings that they had...
Like other matters, is that the part you're talking?
So it's at the end of this report, and it just says, "Management letter."
Some other staff report?
It's another, yeah. So in B, there's another staff report there. Okay. So the response to the management letter, it gives a very intimate guise of the management letter. What the auditor is doing, Larry, is talking about kind of what a significant deficiency or material weakness is, and then he identifies what those were that he found within his audit. And I'm just responding to that, what are we doing in order to make sure that he's dealt with going forward? So his first one was that they had to propose a lot of material journal entries. So what would happen is there was only ER and closing entries that you have to do. That's not something the auditor should be telling us. Those are things that we should be doing prior to giving transactional information to the outside auditors. And so that didn't happen. So I had identified that in February, that there were several areas related to the accounting and finance activities that were going to have to be corrected. And I identified that very early on, and had discussions with that outside auditor, as well as grants, to try to hone in on where those were. And that was really part of why I requested to create a position of the finance director, and specifically to make sure that that position included a very strong background in governmental accounting. That governmental accounting is where you don't have that strong understanding of that. That's where the auditor comes in and can find all of the ER entries that you didn't know you needed to do. So that's where that experience all comes in. And in addition to that, eliminating that, like, bottleneck, sweet information that was happening between grants and the city. So that was what my recommendation was, to eliminate the conflict on grants. And then, we didn't have accounting procedures in the office. We need to make some pretty significant charted account changes. We need to utilize the public management software that we have better. And we need to do regular reviews. So that way, we're making sure that there aren't any material entries that we didn't get it that ended the year, they should be made throughout the year, and that all those closing entries should be done as part of ER and close. The other issue that was identified was, it was an issue with the fire chief contract. And that was identified just prior to me coming on. I had had that conversation with Rose when I first came on, and it was resolved. And the fire chief has also been discussing with me that, you know, maybe there's a way that we can change how that overall compensation is done anyway. So that will be something that we'll bring forward, and have a conversation on it in time. But with regards to this material finding, it's resolved. And then the next one, they had identified in their sampling data that the water consumption rates were not updated to the rate change in the billing system. So that meant that people are getting undercharged for their consumption of water. So that is also something that Michelle and I have discussed, that we really need to go through and look at the rate structure reconciled, the rate to charges for water and sewer, identify the practices that have been happening in the office versus the policies, because there's practices that are occurring that don't jive with policy, or the policy in place that aren't being followed. So some of this is just people get trained by someone before them, and someone before them, and no one's really looking at the policy manual. So that's again, some additional education and training that staff are going to be going through. And then I'm also working on a full write-up of rules and regulations with regards to water and waste water, to make sure that we're adhering to the rate study and to law. What I'm finding is, in terms of codes that we have in place, they only deal with water. We don't have a single code in place that deals with waste water. So that's not good enough. So we'll be going through all of that. I was hoping to get some of it addressed today, but we're going to leave all those two items to be brought back forward with the like this. And then the last item that he had... Is that some, again, it just has to do with people who are being undercharged. So that is the same response as the one before, which is that we're reviewing it, preventing the adjustments, it's necessary, and work with those respect of customer. Still, that's what I hope is happening. So nothing mind-blowing appeared to me. They were all things that I recognized right when I started. And like I said, I had these conversations, I certainly started with Mary Dean, who's an external auditor, and we're all the same people that work with her. We're here, so it's, you know, what my background is, is how we improve.
And locked in? Are we looking good? Question?
Any question I have with how we're working with the people who are undercharge? And after that, I'm going to individually sending letters.
Individually sending letters, yeah.
No one has a problem that they've been overcharged, and then they get a credit?
Right.
People tend to be a little anxious when they find out we're giving them.
And the change to correct the issue is being made moving forward, or is there... Okay, any members of the public have any comments about item B? Okay, so bringing it back to council, this was just...
B, that's a boy.
I'm sorry, B is in boy.
7C.
This was just a discussion. There was no actual item on this, correct? Okay, thank you for that. Michelle, I'm sure you can do that. Okay, so item C is one of the items that was pulled, and that'll be brought back on July 5th.
Yep.
Meeting. So that'll take us to, we're also skipping D and E, and F, sorry. So that's going to take us to item G. Water conservation update.
So we have been getting calls from people asking what we're doing for water conservation, and...
There's...
I think what's happening is they might have like a second home up here, or their primary residence, or somewhere where there is actual conservation measures that are mandated, so that they come up there and they're waiting to get intervention plans for water, or things or whatever. So there's, when the state passed the emergency conservation measures, it is specifically for urban water agencies, which an urban water agency is, has a customer that pays $300,000 for water. So we don't.
Hey, guys, can we ask you to take your conversation outside, please?
We're just trying to find that what we were here for has been moved to next month's meeting. So I was just telling Richard that we're leaving, and I think he's leaving too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we had several items at the beginning of the meeting that were pulled from this to be on the list. So we've skipped a few, and we're on item G right now. And then H and I will be the remainder of our regular agenda.
Any items that we skipped will be at the next meeting.
At the July 5th meeting, yeah, they're being postponed.
So we have a full word. So we are not under any mandated restrictions at this point. That doesn't mean that that could change. It just means, under the current state mandates for water conservation, we are not required to have that level of enforcement. I would say, anyone who has, you know, driven around, it's not difficult to recognize that there is some drought issues going on, you know, that includes here in the city. And we always recommend, consortium if possible, and absolutely regardless, any waste of water, there's actually state laws against waste of water. That's not a conservation issue, that is just a water. So we always, you know, try to reach out when we get complaints of, you know, some sprinklers running down the road, or, you know, you had called me, I think it's Saturday or Sunday, whatever it was, and said, "Oh, my gosh." And so we do take those very seriously, because we don't want any wasting of water. And we do try to work with customers to resolve those issues as quickly as possible. But in terms of mandated restrictions, they're on the right now. I am, the city is part of the Paldras Consortium, and Paldras Consortium is now meeting on a regular basis. CCWD kind of takes the lead on that. They are considered urban water agencies, so they do have mandated water conservation that's in place, and they're going into it about June 10th.
In terms of, you know... What percentage was that, that they recommended?
20 percent or about 20 percent. So in terms of, you know, what can you do if you are concerned, or you want to try to conserve water before it's required that people conserve water, fix leak and sprinklers, fix leak and...
Fix leaking sprinklers, fix leaking toilets. Leaking toilets are the worst offender of water loss ever. And it doesn't seem like it would be that big of a thing, but leaking toilets, running toilets use more water than leaving your sprinkler on. It's not really anything. Repair leaking faucets and showerheads, and then, you know, plant low water, use drought-resistant landscaping. And then, within here, I just offered some web resources through saveourwater.com that give various, you know, ideas for people who want to save or conserve water. But I just wanted to give an update because we are getting calls that they're hearing and they're seeing on Facebook and they're seeing on the web that there is water conservation happening in Palgras, and that is absolutely true. But that not within the city limits because we are not in urban water.
I have a question, Rebecca. When we do decide to, to start the talk of conservation and make it even mandatory, how will that roll out?
I, so I would have to bring that back to council. You would have to have a contingency ordinance adopted with all of the requirements within their enforcement information, and then it would go into a bracket.
Do we do it in stages, like recommended and then urged and then mandated type thing?
You always hope the state's going to do enough time to do that. But when they just did this one, I think they sent out the notification on like June 6th, and they said it has to be implemented on the 10th. So you've got a whole whopping four days notice. So I think at this point, it's a matter of, you know, this, just, you know, consider it, consider, you know, what you can do as a customer and a water user in the city to try to minimize any issues that you might have that are easy for you to fix. And that way, you can get to the point of where there's a mandated conservation requirement to stop it at. And then, it'll be a matter of updating our website, updating our Facebook. We'll put information in the million inserts, and then you would have to have better support.
Do we, I pay my water bill online, so I can't tell you that I've ever really opened my bill. But do we have notes on the bill that can be in bold that can, that can talk about conservation? And this little bullet point about leaking toilets and things like that's kind of just.
Like on the envelope?
No, like printed on, in the body of the bill. We utilize that at this time? I mean, I think that this information in advance would be helpful to tell maybe somebody has a toilet that that's going to make them think that they should consider replacing or repairing. And then, you're, yeah, you're linked, you're.
Yes, so we'll probably, I need to go to the next bill.
Or it'll be on our website. They can go to our website and find out. Okay, any members of the public would like to discuss the conservation discussion? All right, bringing that back. Now we're going to move to item H, Discussion of our Financial Review, May of 2022.
Okay, so May marks the 11th month of the fiscal year. So expenses and revenues should be roughly about 91% of the budgeted amount. And so, we review in terms of where everything rolling in with that threshold. So just in terms of revenue by fund, stuff on the second future. So you can see, you know, we're still hight in the level of revenue in the general funds, followed by sewer, and then water, and then other special revenue funds. And then, expenses by fund also, I guess, because maybe the general fund. Transportation is very large because of. But notice, transportation is the smallest in revenue now because we just submitted Ray Morrison's address. So that's why there's this 18 different districts in the table. So if you look at the next page, overall, the city funds, the revenues are about 65.7%, which is, is not 91%. However, I don't feel so bad because expenses are 76%, not 91%. So we're still, we're still seeing revenues high enough to cover the main expenses. So in terms of net general fund revenues, what expenses still are $316,003. And then, in terms of transportation projects, as I know about on the previous page, we are $1.6 million in income red because of cost of resource price. Sewer operations and management, we are 160 and also 117% of revenues, which I said earlier, we are trending higher than budgeted. And expenses are only 61.5%. And then, water is 91.67, so a little over the benchmark. And expenses are still only about 68%. So everything really looks good, except for the transportation pay. But we do have the invoices out there to get reinforced.
And they totally invoice after we, we started more to.
There's still more to invoice, yes. Yeah, so, and they did accept the big. So they did accept the whole bit, and then they're, they're working on the rest of it. So for that one, it's really just a cash flow issue, but we have plenty of cash flow to look at. And then, expenses by department, obviously, you know, it's police and general fund, grants and financing administration, those are, those are the big ones. All departments are within the budget threshold, so not to start without that. And, yeah. So the one thing that we're doing right now is we're going through and really honing in on any transfers that still needed to be done that haven't been done throughout the year. So we're cleaning all that up. We're also going through the budget and making sure that we're shifting within departments. So if they were over, you know, on one line item, but they're under on another line item, we're cleaning those up so that they're sufficient by the budget overall. Any budgets that look like they're not going to make it, where they're going to exceed what the council approved, we will bring those back to council and we'll make the recommendation to, to adjust those accordingly. And then, those, all of those reviews have played into the actual budget recommendation. So if we're noticing that coffee charges or something are just higher no matter what, then when we did this next budget for '22, '23, we made sure that the coffee charges were in line with what the trends were, so that we shouldn't have to continue chasing negative budgets. Council have any questions of, Rebecca about this one?
Okay, members of the public, any comments or questions on this item? We are moving on to regular item I, that is Discussion and Direction for Fireworks Space at Bret Hart High School.
So this is one of those things that's been happening for years that we were not aware that we were doing it. So apparently, what has been happening every year is that the city has been hosting fireworks displays at Bret Hart High School. And Bret Hart High School allowed it to happen, but we would have to endure the activity so that if something happened, the city would be liable for any damages to the city's facilities. So, and then, we also need fire staff, fire staff to be out there to monitor the fireworks activities. So while that has historically been happening unbeknownst to probably the council, because I was never aware until high school allowed it to happen. I didn't know that it was the city. I felt that it was important that the city is aware of that. A couple would go back to our insurance writers that have to cover it. And so, I just wanted to make sure, because they're coming up to help us, that if the city wants to continue with that arrangement, we do have the staff plan for the day of the display, which can be July 4th. I had gross checks. There's no cost associated with the certificate of insurance, but there is liability exposure. When she reached out to legal, their concern, well, that's a concern. But they did not feel that probably the city shouldn't be involved in it because of the liability exposure. And they also felt that if we were going to do it, that there should really be a contract in place.
Contract with the school?
Yeah, I have a question. Why, if it's on school property, how is, how is it funded or supported or sponsored by the city? I'm very confused because my understanding, in being a business owner and property owner, is anything that happens on my property, regardless of who it is or who's renting it or whatever, it's still my liability.
Because the school basically said, you can only use the parking lot facilities if you cover the cost and the liability associated.
Yeah, but see, that doesn't even work. And the cities who wanted to do it.
And the cities who wanted to do it. It wasn't Bret Hart saying, we want to have fireworks here. It was the city saying, we would like to have somewhere to have fireworks so people aren't going out doing fireworks wherever. And more importantly, what was happening is people were going to the park and doing fireworks. So then, the city was shutting the park down to try to prevent that from happening. And then, they were building other places to do fireworks. So the fire department way back when decided, well, we'll try to find somewhere to have the fireworks displayed so we can kind of control it. Since we don't want it at the park, we're going to try to control it somewhere else. And the only place that they could think of was, was the Bret Hart parking lot. So it wasn't something that was formulated by council. It was, you know, all, it was, it was a goodwill, and it was to try to resolve an issue that the fire department was experiencing. So this is what they came up with. But it was never hosted by Bret Hart. It wasn't Bret Hart who wanted to do it. It was the city fire department that wanted to do it. So, and then, it only came up because they had asked for an insurance certificate. And I thought, why would we have to do an insurance certificate if Bret Hart wants to do fireworks?
Who asked for this certificate?
Nate had called us before.
So in years past, we would provide that to them?
Yes.
And it was never brought to council before?
I'm not in favor of some of the liability.
Well, I feel like the fire grounds is also used. And I think that there's also how fire trucks or whatever that we could. I mean, people are going to use the safe and sane in large parking lot areas. And I do know that the trucks have always been at the high school. But I definitely didn't think it was sponsored or hosted or liability of the city. But yeah, we catch the school on fire. Or a house.
Yeah, so it kind of took me off guard as well. And then I said, oh, we're heading to the council. If you guys want to do it, or, like, you're paying that for it, it's already obviously that, but.
I think it's important, obviously, to have a place to go, but at the same time, I don't think this is that really. I don't feel that we should be taking that.
Well, and I think it's admirable that Nate and that the guys have made themselves available to where the people are congregating with their fireworks. I mean, it's admirable. But I don't think it's ever been formulated this way before.
And we're lucky that nothing's happened. Yeah, it's really, it's interesting because even when people get a liquor license or they get insurance on, let's say, having an event, a pickle patch, regardless of that, you still are liable as the property owner. So I'm, I'm very surprised that the school is even for this, even saying that the, that it's the city's deal. Because realistically, it will fall back on the high school.
And was.
Depending on how big. Council did know.
Okay, so this time, we've approached them, and they are saying.
Probably don't do it.
Don't do it as the recommendation, or don't do this writer, this insurance writer like you've done in the past.
So essentially, the high school could just rope that off or put out barriers or blockades or something.
But then, but if people are going to go there.
Then it'll be, it'll be treated as a call.
Yeah, I mean, I love watching the fireworks, but I'm an anti-firework. I'm not even for any of it, just because of the fact that I, I just, one of my biggest fears is downtown burning up, and it would go like that. And I, I mean, that, yeah, but that would be devastating just to watch it spark.
We automatically have to patrol Utica Park more aggressively on the board because of this reason? Because people do run down the Utica for.
So now, we've shut, we've shut down, but in general, that, that night is patrolled by fire, again, by the highway. It was quiet last year.
Well, we didn't sell fireworks on the street. I'd like to hear if any members of the public have any comments or discussion on fireworks.
I have no comment.
Anybody?
I worry about fire, but I don't remember there ever being anything that I saw to go down to Bret Hart or anything else. I don't remember any of that.
Yeah, I don't either.
And I have to agree with Reddell. I mean, it would have to fall back on the school. That just doesn't make any sense.
So if we're selling fireworks, were we expecting them to use them?
Well, so they, they are safe and sane, and they are for people to do in their driveways or in their yards or in their road.
That's the city street. But that's the city street, and there's still trees, and I think it's more dangerous than you think.
That's what drove it to the high school and to the parks.
People not having their elbow rimmed.
They were in their student streets.
I agree. So have we reached out to the school on this, or the school just knows we do this apparently, and they're okay?
The school is, as long as you get the certificate.
But they did respond.
And we accept the responsibility, then they offer.
But if we don't provide the certificate, and if they show up, then the school's going to enforce it in some way. It's going to be a call, is what you're saying?
It's going to be a call.
So are we, are there people that are planning to sell fireworks in City of Angels?
Yeah, we did that last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, but I mean, has anybody applied?
There's been a ton of the Palgras.
So, I mean, this is kind of a quandary because where do you expect people to do this if you're allowing these things to be sold? I mean, it's kind of like, here's a beer, but you can't drink it.
I've always done it in my driveway. If you live in Ingle Oaks and you know the mountains, it's in that courtyard, and everybody gets together, and it's there.
Block parties.
Block parties, you know, they're always doing it in cold sets or, but it's ultimately the, you know, the respective homeowners' responsibility to have everything available to respond if something goes wrong, so, causes of water and buckets and everything.
I wonder if anybody has applied to my meeting? Or Nate or anybody?
No.
Everybody wanted to come to our meeting.
Their thing is, they feel like if we don't allow it, they're going to go there anyway. And they're just going to be called out. And they're just going to be called out, um, there. I've never been to Bret Hart one, I wasn't even aware that it happened over there, I just know there was a lot in Angel Oaks, and we've got several that fall apart. So I, I just knew people that are in the driveway, I wasn't aware that anyone was going to Bret Hart and doing that.
I think people that don't have the space or maybe live in an apartment.
Right.
They look for a big parking lot, they, there is signage, I believe, when you buy the Safe and Sains in the Safemark parking lot, you can't let them off right there, because it would blow the whole thing up, but.
But it also doesn't mean that other residents from other areas can't come up as well.
True, true. To invite from out of the area, yeah, anything Murphy's up, they need, um, wow, I don't know. I've known that this has gone on, but I didn't know that you, I'm trying to see.
Liability, yeah.
Yeah, the liability, and I'm, if, if our council is advising us to not assume liability, then I, I have to agree with that.
Is it worse though, letting people do it in any brand of place?
Well, the way I see it is if we open ourselves up, I feel like we're opening ourselves up to liability, right? Kind of regardless, but if, I feel like us not assuming the liability is a, is a, it's a quandary.
It is.
Right? Because then there's the.
And we're allowing, we're allowing them to be sold, but then we're not allowing them to light them anywhere, I guess. What is, what is our ordinance on fireworks? It's to allow it. Is there?
Oh, yes.
Any education on that?
Not, not really, other than annually, we have often issued permits, it does require vendors permit to do a fireworks sales. We have not had any requests this year to do fireworks sales.
And it's usually by now, that they're getting them bought and purchased, they're getting their.
Yeah, so if they're planning on doing a stand, nobody's approached us to do, get the permit for the stand as they usually do every single year, so if they are selling them, it's not in a booth like you might traditionally see.
In Salem.
In the Salem, yeah, we've had no application.
And I do know that.
They forgot.
Part of the issue was they, um, they couldn't find volunteers to mount the booth, so.
Well, and they're coming off of last year not be having that fundraising opportunity, so they probably weren't real eager to jump out and buy the, I, they have to make that purchase early on.
There's a booth.
Coming up?
There'll be a booth set up on the 28th of June at the Calvers parking lot.
Calvers Lumber. They just haven't gotten their permit yet.
I have no idea about a permit, I just got a phone call about a booth on the 28th, and that it's a reputable fireworks company, and they're working with Copper Community and Mark Twain Community, and it's a fundraiser for the Badger Boosters of Mark Twain Elementary and fundraisers with Copper.
Do, do please let them know they do need a permit from the city, thanks.
Yeah, they have to.
I don't, I have no idea who the company is. But I mean, they got the letter from Cal Lumber, I put them in touch with Cal Lumber, they were looking for a shopping center, so that's what I know.
So it's not one from previous, it's not one of the normal ones?
No, it's a previous, it's a, they're national companies, and there's a process they go through, and they do all the work for the people hosting the booth. They do the permitting, they do all the work to set it up.
So can you give Amy that information so she can reach out?
I can tell her who comes up with me, yes.
I, I was involved years ago with my children, I was involved through baseball. What is it?
I think they should use Calvers as parking lot since they're selling it.
They can't have it be around the booth within a certain proximity, because the booth has more fireworks. Like a Roman candle.
They can't close the booth down the day before or day of.
They sell fireworks up until.
Before we go out that time, we need to tell them.
Right.
Because when you go back and front all day long, we'll.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not. I agree. Um, all right, council, does anybody have any direction for staff on fireworks space at Bret Hart High School specifically?
I'm a no on this.
Um, I think it's going to happen, it's going to happen all around town, it's going to happen in parking lots and in, in places that we can't even imagine, but we are not hosting, uh, in my opinion, I don't think we should host a location because of the liability.
Yeah, my, my, I'm, I know with the whole hosting, I don't, I don't like that either. I don't think we should host it. But I didn't even want to sell fireworks or allow them to be sold, I'm a total anti, so I'm sorry.
I know.
Sorry.
I will inform you.
Um, before, since we're talking fireworks, can I ask, um, ACBA is doing to 4th of July at the park?
No fireworks.
But, right, of course no fireworks, but is it, it's the Friday, it's not, it's the Friday.
It's the 4th of July first?
It's the 1st of July.
The 1st.
Mm-hmm, and we're just going to have swag bags for the kids and watermelon contest and.
Great.
Dress up contest and just have fun, nothing to do with.
And it's the actual four.
Anthem.
Perfect, and that's what I saw.
The only thing we're going to do is if he decides a little boy will do the anthem, but he's not sure he wants that.
That's a lot of pressure. Okay, item number eight, administrative report.
Um, so we're going to bring items back on the set, um, so that means that will be probably a big, a six-hour tour, so we probably will not add anything else, um, to that meeting as much as I can help it. I do need to work on an ordinance for SB 1383, so that is the, uh. 1383, the organic waste. The organic waste, um, ordinance. So you guys passed a resolution for exempting the city, but it only exempted the city from parks, there's other parks that we're not exempted from, so I will be bringing, um, so we have to, we have to publish the information with regards to the ordinance, and then I can bring it to council, or to the council on it, because we are behind, that was supposed to be done late in summer, so I'm getting caught up with that. And, uh, so you probably won't see it on the next meeting, because you'll still have enough time for us to publish everything, so you'll see it on the second meeting. Um, and then I am going to be on vacation on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, next week, but I'm certainly available by phone, if you need me, or an email, and, um, our, uh, let's see, our RFP is closing for IT services here in, pretty soon. The RFQ is out there for engineering services, that one will be closing through in the near future as well. We have tours going on for the IT services, RFP tomorrow at 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, so they can ask whatever questions they need and also look at our current equipment, that needs to be replaced. And then, um, the, uh, I've just, I've just been getting questions on the RFQ with regards to engineering services, so I'm responding to those as they come in, all of that is going through a public purchase. And that, I am coordinating with, um, with Amy and Alicia, building and planning with regards to the transition for, um, building and planning from interwest to CSG, um, so that's happening right now as well.
And they go live on that, is July 1st or 2nd? 1st, great.
Yep. And, um, we're just trying to catch up on the invoices for Caltrions, uh, for that, I'm going to be following up this week to see what's left on the front list for the Murphy Street Road sidewalk project, and I will have a report out on that up next meeting. Awesome.
Okay, council report. Gretel.
Um, let's see, we have had farmer's markets, two of them, actually, I guess, and I drew the winner, um, for a raffle, um, and, uh, I, the porch is really busy.
I attended, um, IMWR.
IWR, yeah.
PA, Fort Airline last Wednesday, and there were quite a few updates on grants, sort of what's from, which shows, um, they have mentioned that they were working on invoices for the Stevens Tower for a year, um, and then there were two presentations, one was for program, and I don't know if you heard of this, but the meeting mostly consisted of presentations and updates. And then I attended farmer's market the opening day, I believe, or maybe last Friday, but it was a good turnout, and it was warm, but it definitely pulled off, so it sounded nice.
Um, I attended a council meeting with Rebecca and the contractor on Murphy Street Road, um, hoping that that comes to a close here very, very soon. Um, I had two interviews, I had Rose, you might have to help me, they were interviewed on some different grants, um, the tobacco.
Public health.
Public health, yeah, tobacco, and then economic development, and that was all.
Thank you for doing most of it.
Yeah.
Okay, correspondence, we have our news and notes for both May 30th as well as July 6th as part of our packets. Does anybody have any comments or questions on those? Okay, Rose, where are we at with our calendar?
Calendar, I did send out last week, I'm going to say last Friday, um, I added some more dates, some changes, um, just make sure you pay attention to the date changes, I'm kind of scratching some out and put all the new ones in there, so if you have any questions, definitely reach out, um, just like Caroline did when we needed Isabel to sit in.
Okay.
Oh, so one more thing, would it, uh, at all be possible to re-convene into closed session?
We can do that. Okay, so having said that, we will, um, adjourn this meeting and go into closed session and what we want to adjourn, we'll come back out and adjourn the meeting. So at 7:06, thank you very much for attending tonight, and we'll see you in July.